Okay, we're gonna have three separate agendas here tonight. This first one is for the public hearing that is required for our millage rate on our property taxes. And so we have one action item on our agenda tonight. Proposal to set the Walker County millage rate at 9.838 mills in the unincorporated area and 13.33 in the incorporated, this will be the cities, incorporated areas. It says, "The proposed fiscal FY '19 budget includes the same millage rate as last year for residents in the unincorporated area of Walker County. However, due to the tax digest, formula city residents will experience a slight property tax increase of a 0.177 mills or 1.35 percent." The adjustment works out to be $7.64 on a home worth $100,000. This is the first of three public hearings, being Thursday, August 23rd at 6:00 p.m. at 201 South Main Street in the Annex III Building. We will also have a second meeting Thursday, August 30th at 10:00 o'clock at the Civic Center in Rock Springs. And then the third and final meeting will be Thursday, August 30th at 6:00 p.m. here again at the Catus, excuse me, not Catus, excuse me, Walker County Courthouse Annex III, 201 South Main Street. Just a little bit of comments, and then we'll let anyone that would like to speak on this. The way the state has local government do the millage rate is very confusing to me. So I hope you all understand it and can retain it better than I can because it's, the formulas are quite complicated. And what we were attempting to do this year was just to take the growth off of the property value increases off of new constructions that have been in our county, reassessments that have changed. We did everything we could do to try to maintain the same millage rate for both the incorporated and the unincorporated areas. And we have a good team in-house, and Greg McConnell is our Chief Financial Officer, does a great job. And we got in the conference room and we went round and round and round and round, trying to figure out how we could keep both the net millage rates the same. And he told me for two days it couldn't be done. And I just thought, there's gotta be a way. So I went and did some more research, and I had some other people tell me, it can't be done. So you have to make a decision, you know, if you're trying to maintain that one gets changed or the other one vice versa. So what we decided to do was to keep the net millage rate the same for the unincorporated or those that have property within the county. So unless your assessed value goes up or down, your property taxes on all of your county property will be the same as it was last year because the net millage rate did not change. Again, the only thing that is changing is if you live inside the city limits, and part of this is due to the rollback that is done. You roll back on sales tax collection, and you roll back on the insurance tax credits that are paid back into the local government from the, for the state manages those from the insurance companies, disperses those back to the county on the 15th of October every year. So those come in strong this year. We rolled those back. And so on that insurance tax credit, the city gets those credits, those dollars, and so does the county. And so that offset is what you should see in your city taxes based off of that rollback. So I hope I explained that where you can understand it, but it is somewhat confusing. But we've kept this as revenue neutral as we can with these rates. This will generate an additional $264,005 projected over prior year, which you see at the very bottom if you have the notice that was in the paper. So if anyone has any questions or would like to speak in any form or fashion, we're only talking about the millage. So we've got this first item on the agenda. If you've got other things tonight you want to talk about, we'll have that later in the meeting, and we'll let everyone speak that wants to speak. But if there's anything pertaining to this one proposal of the millage rate, we'd ask you to come up to the podium so we can all hear and see you well, and we can get this on camera so people that want to watch this online or on Facebook. And we ask that you state your name clearly so we can get that in our record, and then we'll let you have the floor. So does anybody would like to speak about this topic?
I've got a question.
Okay, if you would come forward, please.
Let me have a place because I'm a little bit confused by what you're saying. I live in the city of Rossville, also own property in the county.
Okay.
But I'm just going with the notice in the paper.
Okay.
The one thing I don't understand is down here at the bottom says it's $75,000 parcel zero. Where did that number come, the 75,000?
That's the number that the state makes us use to put this notice out. This notice script is a template that we adopted from the state because to me, the verbiage in the notice is confusing. So what this is saying is, is they make us show a proposal based off of $100,000 is approximately zero in the unincorporated area and $7.64 in the incorporated area. And then the proposed tax increase for non-homesteads, so they're giving you two comparisons. The $100,000 includes the $2,000 homestead, the 75,000, let's see, well, maybe I'm saying it backwards. Incorporated area, proposed tax increase for non-homestead, yes, so it doesn't include the homestead. They show a value at 75,000 just to give people some sense of what these numbers mean. So then again, it says approximately zero, so that means it's not changing on the unincorporated. And the incorporated, it would go up by $6.03.
Okay.
Did I say that wrong? I'm sorry, hold on, let me let Terry speak.
Those two numbers are the average home values for Walker County rounded to the nearest $25,000.
Okay, thank you for that. So let's see, average home values in Walker County rounded to the nearest home number there.
Okay. Then when I first read this, I might slow more sense now, but I'm still a little confused. There's, it's, there's gonna be a tax increase on every parcel, no matter what you're doing.
Inside the city limits.
Okay.
But your county property will not increase unless your assessed value changed. So if your property, I'm just gonna make up a number. If your property assessed last year at $50,000 and you got the notice this year and it still says it's 50,000 and it's a county property, then it's not changing. But if it went up to 51,000 because your assessed value changed, then you would have a little increase because your value went up by that $1,000 of value.
You know, you're talking about the incorporated area.
Well, speaking of like the unincorporated, it would not increase unless your value went up.
Oh, okay.
Because if your value came down, then what you would pay would come down as well. But if you live inside the city or have property in the city, it's gonna go up a little over 1% on your taxes.
So all you're addressing is, like you said earlier, is the increase on a parcel of land since somewhere in the recent past where the asset valued or that the building added to it or something like that?
Well, the increase will apply against all properties in the city limits for the county assessment. These are just two examples of value to give you a sense of how much it's changing.
Well, that seems strange to me that there would be my property in the city, the county taxes is gonna increase, and my property in the county is not gonna increase. I don't understand that.
I know, it's confusing, it doesn't make sense. I don't like it, but it's what we have to live by the way. All these formulas work with rolling back the sales tax and rolling back the tax credit on, on the insurance tax credit. And so the cities get a portion of that insurance tax credit directly to them, and so they're supposed to roll that back or make that decision at the city council level.
Sure ain't happening in Rossville. They've done, it's in the same paper where they're going up 21%.
Right. So last year, you know, this here shows we went almost up 22% overall when you look at the very, over five-year history.
Yeah.
And we're, you know, showing near 1.89%. And that's how much revenue's been increased over prior year.
Well, I appreciate your time, I'm still a little worried.
Maybe, maybe afterward, or Terry maybe can maybe clear things up. That's what he does every day.
Now, too, this doesn't include the school taxes.
Good point.
And that, because of what we've done, they're going down. So they went down a little bit on the school taxes. But, but these numbers that he's putting out to you do not include that at all. So you're gonna have one going up, one going down. Some cases, not all, it could just be even once it's done, so.
I'll pay different tax bills. I'll pay tax bills in the county, I'll pay tax bills in the city.
And the tax bill that you pay in the county will include the schools.
Yeah.
That's included on that. What Parkus Shannon's talking about is only for the local county government.
Right.
And that's quite a bit less than what school is, but they did decrease theirs this year, so.
Yeah, so the school board sets the school tax, but it all goes out on the same billing with the county government tax.
Yeah.
So it does get confusing. I have to gig into this every, every time and talk to Greg and Terry to keep it straight myself.
Has there been a change in the distribution of whatever taxes are received and back from the state that's going to the percentage to the city and the percentage to the county? Has there been a difference in that since the last cycle, tax cycle?
There's not any property taxes per se that's collected at the state level, it's collected at the local level on property taxes.
But I understand, I thought I understood you to say because of some rollbacks.
Oh, yes, okay. The rollbacks is the sales tax that is collected and dispersed back to the local government by the state, and also the insurance tax credit. Basically, all insurance companies, for, to make it easy to understand, basically pay a franchise fee, so to speak, in the state to do business based off premiums. And so they credit those back to the proper jurisdictions based off of those sales dollars. And so you roll those back into your property taxes as well. And so that's what makes the differential between the net millage rate for the cities and the county properties. Okay, any other questions or comments? Anybody'd like to come to the floor? All right, it's your last call, anybody? Hearing none will close out our public hearing on our millage rate. And at this time, we'll open our public hearing on our rezone request. We have a second hearing for application for rezone for David Carlock requesting rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for property located at 6747 North Highway 27, Rock Springs, Georgia, tax amount 0-3283-002. The first hearing was at the Planning Commission last week on Thursday, August the 16th. This will be the second public hearing. These have been advertised in the paper, there were signs put up around the property, and also there were residents in the surrounding areas who were mailed notification of this request. So this is just a public hearing, there won't be any action taken on this one way or the other until our next session of this, which is the actual regular commissioners meeting that will follow this meeting. So is there anyone in attendance tonight that would like to speak in opposition of this request? If you're against this request, you would want to come up now and speak in opposition? Okay, hearing none. Is there anyone that would like to come up and speak in favor of this request? Anyone that wants to speak in favor? Okay, and we do have Mr. Carlock here as the applicant. Mr. Carlock, would you like to come up and just give up just a brief statement about what you're doing, just for our record so the citizens will understand what you're working to do with the property?
My name's David Carlock. I have the property in Rock Springs that I have requested the zoning be changed from commercial residential to strictly commercial. I have a local retired gentleman that's with a car lot there on that piece of property, and so I just need to change the zoning only yet. And we're gonna do some renovating on the existing building there. And at the council meeting, they, or at the hearing last week, they requested to put a gate or a cable to keep from people going in during the night, and so that won't be a problem.
Okay, very good. Does anyone have any questions for Mr. Carlock? Okay, thank you, sir. Yeah, this, this was a recommendation from the Planning Commission to approve this. There was one resident that was in attendance at that meeting that spoke in favor of this rezoning and had no issue, was very favorable of the amount of work and cleanup and renovation to the building that Mr. Carlock is already planning to do. Anybody have anything else on this before we move forward? All the advertisements and all the documents for that. Okay, this time we'll close out our public hearing on the rezone request. At this time, I'll call us to order to open up the meeting for a regular public meeting. This is our regular scheduled meeting, a Thursday, August 23rd. It is 6:19. We've just finished up our two public hearings. We've already had our pledges and our invocation in the packet. If you picked this up or all this information is online, you will find a copy of the minutes from the prior meeting, which was our regular scheduled meeting on August the 3rd. Anyone that has reviewed those minutes, does anyone have any, I'm sorry, I said August 3rd, it's August 9th, I agree. August 9th is a regular scheduled meeting, thank you. Does anyone have any, seen any corrections or any issue with these minutes or anything that we need to call to the attention of this meeting before we sign these into the Okay, hearing none, we'll move to sign this into the record. Okay, new business item number one, application for rezoning. David Carlock requested rezone from CN Commercial Neighborhood to C1 Commercial for property located at 6747 North Highway 27, Rock Springs, Georgia, tax amount 03283-002. Planning Commission approved with the condition of a gated entrance. I'm going to accept the recommendation of the Planning Commission and approve this Okay, our next item is a resolution R-029-18. This is updating and authorizing 911 charges on wireless telecommunication in accordance with the revisions to the state law updating and authorization. So this time, I'll let our county attorney read this resolution and make any additional comments he would like to make.
Resolution R-029-18, a resolution of the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, updating and authorizing 911 charges on telephone service and wireless enhanced 911 charges other than prepaid wireless services, providing an effective date, repealing prior resolutions in conflict and for other purposes. Whereas the general law regarding 911 charges has been substantially modernized and revised by Georgia Law 2018, page 689, House Bill 751. And whereas many of these revisions include oversight and administration of 911 matters by the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority and the Department of Revenue, and whereas Walker County, Georgia desires to update its 911 charges in accordance with the revisions to state law, now therefore be it resolved by the Sole Commissioner of Walker County, Georgia as follows. Section 1, Definitions. Unless specified otherwise in this resolution, all terms shall be defined in the same manner as specified in OCGA Section 46-5-122. Section 2, 911 Charges on Monthly Services. Pursuant to OCGA Section 46-5-133A, there is imposed a monthly 911 charge upon each telephone service subscribed to by a telephone subscriber whose exchange access lines are in the area served or which could be served by the 911 service. Pursuant to OCGA Section 46-5-134A1A, the amount of such 911 charge shall be $1.50 per month per telephone service provided to this telephone subscriber. Subsection B, pursuant to OCGA Section 46-5-133A, there is imposed a monthly wireless enhanced 911 charge upon each wireless telecommunications connection other than a connection for prepaid wireless service subscribed to by a telephone subscriber whose place of primary use is within the geographic area that is served by Walker County, Georgia, or that would be served by Walker County, Georgia for the purpose of such an emergency 911 system. Pursuant to OCGA 46-5-134A2A, the amount of such enhanced wireless 911 charge shall be $1.50 per month per wireless telecommunications connection provided to the telephone subscriber. Subsection C, the 911 charges under this section shall commence January 1st, 2019. Section 3, Collecting and Remitting of 911 Charges. All such 911 charges collected by service suppliers shall be remitted to the Georgia Department of Revenue as the contracted collection partner of the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority at the times and in the manner provided by OCGA Section 38-3-185, OCGA Section 38-3-186, and any other Georgia Department of Revenue or Georgia Emergency Communications Authority rule or regulation adopted pursuant to Article 12 of Chapter 13 of Title 38 of the OCGA and Chapter 13 of Title 50 of the OCGA, the Georgia Administrative Procedures Act. Section 4, Deposit and Use of Proceeds. Pursuant to OCGA Section 46-5-134, all proceeds received by Walker County from 911 charges imposed by this resolution shall be deposited in the Emergency Telephone System Fund maintained by the county, kept separate from general revenue of the county, and used exclusively for the statutory authorized purposes. Section 5, Resolution Filing Requirements. The clerk of the county shall file with the State Revenue Commissioner a certified copy of this resolution within 10 days of the adoption thereof. Any subsequent amendment to this resolution shall likewise be so filed by the clerk within 10 days of the adoption thereof. Section 6, Effective Date and Aplicability. This resolution shall become effective on January 1st, 2019. Any prior resolution establishing such 911 charges shall remain in effect until January 1st, 2019. On such dates, such 911 charges shall be governed by this resolution. Section 7, Repealer. All resolutions or parts of resolutions in conflict with this resolution are repealed as of January 1st, 2019. So resolve and adopt it this 23rd day of August, 2018. And then there's a place for your signature. I believe you made some remarks about this last night on the television show, Commissioner. We already have a resolution in place for, I believe, 911 collection for this particular telephone service. And what we're doing tonight is putting this resolution in place to account for the new way that the Department of Revenue will collect these 911 charges. In addition to this, we are adding the prepaid wireless service resolution that will apply to prepaid wireless phones, which is not accounted for it at this time, correct?
Well, it's a, it's a different rate.
Okay.
It's handled differently.
So because of this, House Bill 751, changing the procedure for dealing with this, we have used the, the resolutions that were recommended by ACCG and have changed our rates and the procedures, but there is a 120-day freeze on when this could become applicable. Theoretically, we could have this applied as of December 20th of this year, but because of the way that the statute is worded, the Department of Revenue will not begin collecting these taxes for us until January 1st, 2019. So it just makes more sense and it's cleaner to have a begin date of January 1st, 2019.
Yeah, this is something that has been worked on for two or three years at the state level. There's been a lot of local governments that have been very concerned across the state about the decrease in revenues for this 911 service fee. And if you think about it, back in the day, everybody pretty well had one telephone at their house, and there was one 911 fee charged on that one telephone line. Well, most households now will have more than one telephone because you have cellphones. And so a household may have two, three, four phone numbers that are all being assessed that fee. And again, across the state, everyone has seen these charges just keep getting lower and lower and lower, and we keep seeing more and more people with cellphones. And so there is a lot of concern that there hasn't been, at the vendor level, accountability for the proper disbursements of those dollars back to the local correct jurisdiction. And so the state has recognized this to be such a large enough issue of concern that they did pass this legislation this year, was signed by the governor, to create this new authority to give accountability and audit, and being able to audit those cellphone providers at the state level. And so the distribution of funds will come in through to the state, they'll verify these documents, and then they'll disperse those back out to the local level to make sure this is being done properly. The Association of County Commissioners was very, very much in favor of this. We feel here locally that this will be a very good thing for our community because we will have the state acting on our behalf, making sure we're getting the proper funds that we're supposed to have. Because the money is earmarked and designated and set up to manage and run your 911 center. Unfortunately, the amount of money that comes in for this is not enough to even run the center for a full year, so we're still having to supplement it out of the general fund each year. And so this will hopefully generate more revenue to be able to not have to take so much of the property tax money to offset the cost of running the 911 center. So these are the model resolutions that were suggested that we make, and before the state can disperse funds to our county starting January 2019, they have to have these resolutions on file 120 days in advance, as Mr. Williamson mentioned. So we have somewhat a short window of time to get this done and get it into our public record and for our clerk to submit these to the state. So is there any questions or feedback on this? Yes?
If I understand you right, the state legislator is creating another authority?
Yes.
No, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Anything else?
On the prepaid, they're usually 75 cents.
That's correct.
Or a teenager, it's all.
And our next resolution will take up on the prepaid as well. So they're making us do this in two separate resolutions.
So the prepaid is gonna go up to $1.50 off?
That's correct. You are correct. The prepaid now is 75 cents, and statewide, it's going up to $1.50 to match the other cellphone rate. Okay, so we're gonna sign this into the record and approve this resolution and get this sent off tomorrow so we get all the documentation in for state. Of course, we'll attest this. So our next item on our agenda, Resolution R-30-18, authorizing the 911 charges on the prepaid wireless telecommunications in accordance with the revisions of state law updating and authorization here. So, Mr. Mann? So, Mr. Mann.
I don't mind reading the whole thing, but with you all's permission, I think I'll just skip around a little bit because I think you get the gist from that first read-through that I just gave you from the prior resolution. But suffice it to say, I'll just read, let's go to section two on page one. Pursuant to OCGA section forty-six dash five dash one thirty-four point two B one, there's imposed a prepaid wireless 911 charge, and the amount of such 911 charge shall be one dollar fifty cents per retail transaction occurring within the jurisdiction of the public service answering point. And the effective date under subsection B is the same, it's January first, 2019. The collecting and remitting of 911 charges under section three is identical to the structure that we have for the non-prepaid, and the deposit and use of the proceeds, the resolution requirements and the effective date also track the same procedure of the non-prepaid 911 charges. They are paid into this authority, the Georgia Emergency Communications Authority, who then, as the commissioner says, will remit that to us.
The state legislation took up to raise the prepaid rate by seventy-five cents or to double that in hopes to create the additional revenue that all 911 systems are needing across the state to be self-sustaining. And that's ultimately their goal, is for these charges to self-sustain your 911 center. I know this may come hard to believe, but many jurisdictions, more so in your bigger metropolitan areas, because there are so many resellers of cellular service, and there's a lot of companies into the prepaid cellular, I'm not sure how many we have remitting to us, but in some areas, they'll have thirty-plus vendors remitting the 911 fees. And so they're sending those checks in every month. And so a vendor sends you a check, you have no way of knowing if it's wrong or right, and if they're paying you too much or not enough. And so creating this new Georgia Emergency Communication Authority, they will go to all thirty of those vendors over time and will audit and have accountability to make sure they're reporting those fees correctly to the state of Georgia. And then if they're not, they'll have to deal with the state of Georgia instead of each municipal government. Yes, man?
I have a question. What about a lot of these areas that they don't even get the service? Why, I mean, they have cellphones, but their cellphone doesn't work.
Well, it doesn't necessarily mean the quality of service, but if someone is taking out a service agreement to utilize that phone any at all, it's itemized on your monthly statement or your prepaid statement of this charge. This type of system's been in place for probably over thirty years, even long before cellphones ever come out. This was on your home telephone bill years ago. And I'm sure the rate over time's probably inched up a little bit to come to that dollar fifty, but it's been in place, I would venture to say probably thirty years or so. Okay, anything else? All right, we'll sign this into the record and approve this. Okay, we've got a couple more resolutions here. We have to list these out separately, but we have a resolution R thirty-one eighteen for three million dollars as a tax anticipation note referred to as a tan from the Bank of LaFayette, and a resolution R thirty-two eighteen for three million dollars as a tax anticipation note handed to First Volunteer Bank. So before council here reads one of these, again, we're just going to read one of these. These are in your packet and also will be online. They're identical except for the exchange of the two lenders.
I have a question. Where's it get the packets?
Should've been some out on the front table. There's a limited number, I don't know if there's any more, but it all will be on our website. All of our packets from all of our meetings are on our website. Just to give you a little background, back in 2017, when I took office, the second week I was in office, we had to go to the Bank of LaFayette because we didn't have any money to operate on, and we had over three and a half million dollars worth of bills that were not paid from the prior year. And we knew by the cash flow projections that the accounting department had done that we were going to have an eight million dollar shortfall just to survive and operate the county, to cover daily operational expenses, to run the court system, the jail system, the police cars, fire services, county government, everything, we were going to be eight million dollars projected short. And so state of Georgia is unique in a couple of areas, and one of those is, is a local government in the state of Georgia is not allowed to file federal bankruptcy. We're one of two states in the country that you cannot file for bankruptcy, but the state of Georgia does allow local, county, and city governments to do a tax anticipation note where you can borrow against your incoming property taxes that you will be collecting. So to simplify in my mind and to be able to articulate and explain to you what a tax anticipation note is, it's basically payday lending for government. You're borrowing against the paycheck that's coming in. So tax collections are due in the county by December twentieth of each year. We are actually borrowing against money that's coming in from you, the citizens and the property owners of our county, to pay our bills now, because we don't have enough money to pay our bills now, so we're going to borrow against the money that we should be using to pay our bills for next year. So it's just payday lending for government. So my goal and quest has been is to break this cycle, and it's a very difficult cycle to break, even with the cutting of expenses that we've done and the increase of revenue that we had last year and operating under a budget. We inherited this cycle, and so we're trying to work our way out of this cycle. So last year, Bank of LaFayette, the second week I was in office, loaned us the four million dollars that we needed to get current, and that's all that their board felt comfortable doing based off of the guidelines that they have to follow with FDIC. I cannot say enough positive about the Bank of LaFayette. They stepped up and stood in the gap for this county when everybody else was running for cover. And the Gilberts there that lead that bank and their team, and the board of the Bank of LaFayette took risk, they took pride in their community, and they were willing to support this new administration, even though over the last several years, they would not support the prior administration because they didn't believe in the direction the county was going. They were behind this administration and wanted to do their part as a local community bank. And so it has been a pleasure working with the Gilberts over there, and it's been refreshing to have business-minded bankers that understand the situation that we were in and being able to step up and make those decisions. Greg McCullough and I went over there on a Thursday morning, and within probably an hour of conversation and showing them our information, they committed two million dollars on the spot and said, "Our board meeting is today at four o'clock," and that must be while you're here. And I said, "I had no idea when your board meeting was or what your lending process was. I've had all my own problems to deal with lately." And they said, "Well, that's awful coincidental." And I said, "No, that's not coincidental. That's a God thing. That just did not happen for us to show up on the day that they meet." He said, "I'll have you an answer by five o'clock," and at four forty-five, he called me and said, "We're going to get you the four million dollars that you need." That just doesn't happen, folks. Any of you that are in business or have done banking relations, that just doesn't happen across America. So we're very, very grateful to them. Through that process, I had seven other banks tell me just flat, "No, they were not going to touch Walker County." Fortunately, First Volunteer Bank came back. They have a location also here in LaFayette up there at the intersection of, is it one ninety-three? They're close to where the Walmart is. They come back in, one thirty-six, excuse me, corner of one thirty-six and twenty-seven, and said, "Hey, let's talk about it." So I went in front of a group of about twelve people for a couple of hours and explained to them where we were, and they also agreed back last, I think it's June, July timeline, to also loan us the other four million dollars that we needed to get us through the end of the year. These loans were set up as line of credits, which means we could pull down that money as needed, and therefore, we're only paying interest on those loans as we receive that money, whatever the balance is. They did not force us to take all that money up at once to start charging us interest on the full amount. We were able to pull and draw down on those over a period of time. At the end of the day, we ended up only drawing seven and a half million dollars of the eight million dollars that we had available to us. So we had a half a million dollars we did not need to use, nor did we have to pay interest on that money. So we appealed to our property taxpayers that did not take and escrow their payments into mortgages and asked as many that could to pay as early as possible so we could pay back these loans as quickly as possible. And by state law in Georgia, anytime you take out a tax anticipation note, you have to pay it back in full by December thirty-first of that year, or you're in violation of state law. So these are not loans that you can do and just keep it rolling. You have to pay it off by the last day of the year. So I was appealing to our citizens that I wanted to have a Christmas dinner and not be seven and a half million dollars in debt at our two local banks. And so we were able to get enough revenue coming in in early November that we were starting to make payments back on these the second week of November. And it's kind of a funny story, when I went back into the Bank of LaFayette the second week of November and asked Dave and Henry if I could see them for a few minutes. We walked in, they closed the door, and they said, "How much are you short?" I said, "What are you talking about?" And they said, "Well, we know you're the commissioner, you must be coming back for more." And I said, "No, I brought you a check. I'm making my first million-dollar payback on the four million dollars of second week of November." So they thought I'd gone and borrowed that money elsewhere to pay them. I said, "Those days are over. We don't do that anymore." And so we were able to get both banks paid off a hundred percent with interest by December the twenty-second. So I want to thank the citizens of Walker County for stepping up and those that were able to pay early and those that were able to pay on time and help us overcome that hurdle to get that loan paid back early so I could somewhat enjoy a Christmas dinner without worrying about if I was going to have the money or I was going to be in violation of state law. So thank you all for that. So this year, when we started projecting and looking at our budget, we knew that the tax revenue coming in, we just used seven and a half million dollars to pay last year's bills. So we knew coming into this year, it was already a given that we were going to have to do another tax anticipation note this year to get us through the year. My goal all along has been to get out of this cycle, get out of it in four years, to reduce this process by at least two million dollars every year, from having responsible government, responsible budgeting, accountability, to reduce this every single year by at least two million dollars. We have achieved that goal because when you add these up, we're only going to do a tax anticipation note for six million dollars, and I hope we don't use all of it. So my meetings this year with both Bank of LaFayette and First Volunteer Bank were short, simple, and to-the-point sweep because they were on board with us, we had a proven track record, and we were not asking for as much. And so they very quickly got their approval processes done and got these set up for us where we could to borrow this money. But in order to do this legally, we have to have these resolutions. Also, the county attorney has to write a letter stating that there's no other outstanding liabilities, lawsuits, or things that haven't already been disclosed in the audit or in the resolution. And so also, in our projections early this year when we did our budget, we were anticipating that we would be doing this in either May or June of this year. Last year, we had to do this in January. We thought this year would probably be the end of May first or June. Well, folks, here we are, the end of August. So we have gone almost eight complete months. We've gone two months longer than we anticipated, which means we've had good money management, we've had good cash flow, everybody's adhering to their budgets, and we are not going to need any of this funding probably until the first week of September. And then we will be able to pay this back very quickly, and hopefully, we won't have to draw it all, because these banks give us outstanding rates, both this year and last year. The Bank of LaFayette this year is charging us three point one percent. First Volunteer is charging us three point two five percent. So they are treating us very good on these rates, and they know that by state law, we've got to pay it back, and they know they've got security because it's secured by the taxes that are coming in, and they also know we can't file for bankruptcy. So us, and I believe the state of Ohio are the only two states that can't file bankruptcy. Our folks, honestly, last year would have probably been in my thought process to see if that was a valid option. But we didn't have that lever to pull, so we just had to work and dig in and make this happen. So we will let Matt read these as our counsel, and again, we're just going to read one because you just changed the name, they're both the same amount, and all of the conditions are the same. And so once he reads these, we'll open up the floor for any public comment.
Resolution R dash zero three one dash eighteen, resolution of the Walker County Commissioner, authorizing a tax anticipation note tan. Whereas Walker County government has experienced a shortfall due to cash flow deficiency in fiscal year 2017, 2018, and whereas the county did not receive tax revenues in fiscal year 2017, 2018 in a sufficient amount to pay employees and other operating expenses, and whereas it is almost certain that sufficient tax revenues will not be received by the county until fiscal year 2018, 2019, and whereas in order to ensure that employees are paid, that the county continues to operate, and that all operating expenses be met, it is necessary that the county borrow a maximum of three million dollars within the 2018 fiscal year for the purpose of paying expenses of the county in connection with paying employees of the county and paying operating expenses of Walker County, Georgia, and prevent any disruption thereof. And whereas the county is authorized by the provisions of Article nine, section five, paragraph five of the Constitution of the State of Georgia and by OCGA section thirty-six dash eighty dash two, to make temporary loans to pay for the operation of the county and to pay expenses in the way and manner and for the purposes herein after set forth, and whereas the expenditure of such monies to be borrowed for the purposes herein set forth is authorized by the provisions of OCGA section thirty-six dash eighty dash two, and whereas with the aforementioned temporary loan, there will be no other unpaid or outstanding temporary loans of Walker County made in any prior year under the provisions of Article nine, section five, paragraph five of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, and whereas the proceeds of said temporary loan shall be employed to pay expenses for fiscal years 2018 and 2019 as occurred between August twenty-third, 2018, and December thirty-first, 2018, in compliance with the provisions of Article nine, section five, paragraph five of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, and whereas the aggregate of said temporary loan and all temporary loans to Walker County shall not be in excess of seventy-five percent of the total gross income from taxes of the county collected in the last preceding year in accordance with the provisions of Article nine, section five, paragraph five of the Constitution of the State of Georgia of nineteen eighty-three, nor greater than the sums which the county shall be entitled to receive from said taxes levied during the calendar year 2018 in which this temporary loan is made and is in compliance with the provisions of OCGA section thirty-six dash eighty dash two, and whereas the making of said temporary loan to this body shall not involve the expenditure of funds in excess of the total appropriation for the current fiscal year, October first, 2017 through September thirtieth, 2018. Now therefore be it resolved, and it is hereby resolved by the county, that the county shall obtain a temporary loan up to the amount of three million dollars from the Bank of LaFayette in installments to meet obligations necessary for the operation of the county. The total balance of the indebtedness herein authorized shall be payable on or before December thirty-first, 2018. Any part or all of the total indebtedness may, at the option of the county, be paid to its maturity without penalty and without further accrual of interest upon any principal amount so paid, and be it further resolved that the proceeds of said loan shall be paid over to the county and become a part of the general fund of Walker County, and the commissioner shall be responsible for and expend the same in the same way he is responsible for and expends any other public funds coming into his hands, in accordance with the provisions of OCGA thirty-six eighty-two, and be it further resolved that the commissioner of Walker County, Georgia, proceed on August twenty-third, 2018, and any date thereafter in 2018 to obtain the aforementioned temporary loan from the Bank of LaFayette and execute a promissory note in the amount thereof to the Bank of LaFayette in the name of and for and on behalf of Walker County, and affix his signature thereto in his representative capacity respectively as commissioner of Walker County. of Walker County, Georgia, as provided by OCGA 36-82, duly adopted at a duly called regular meeting of the governing authority of Walker County, Georgia on August 23rd, 2018 at the Walker County Courthouse, NX3 LaFayette, Georgia.
Additional comments, although anyone else speak, thinking about this. One thing I want everybody to realize too, this is a joint effort, this is not done just by me. This takes the entire county government team, everyone inside local county government of Walker County, working together to manage their budgets, to make sure every dollar is spent wisely, from the tax collection all the way through everything that we do as a county, as a total united system. It takes everybody to pull this off, to be able to reduce this by two million dollars. And so also, this is allowing Walker County to earn its credibility back and to let people know that Walker County is looking at, it's come across new day in Walker County, and that we are getting our financial house in order, and that we have goals that we are reaching, and that we will continue to reduce the amount of this and shorten the timeline that we borrowed any of these funds. Because last year, between the two loans that we did, because we had to start borrowing that money so early in January, we paid out round numbers about a hundred and forty-seven thousand dollars in interest, just on those tax anticipation notes. That's a whole lot of money of tax dollars, your tax dollars, that we need to put to work another way, not by using it to pay interest with on loans because there hadn't been fiscal responsibility in the past. And so we are digging our way out, and to be able to clip away at this, a couple of million dollars a year, about two more years of this, but in the first four years, this will be done behind us, and hopefully we are setting the stage for this county to never have to go back and have to be borrowing money and doing payday lending to keep this county going. Anyone have any questions or comments about these?
Shannon, I'd like to say I think you're on a good job.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
And I appreciate it.
I agree.
Anybody? Thank you very much. We work hard, and again, it's a team, I could not do this by myself. It takes everybody. Okay, again, we have a Resolution R-31-18, we're going to sign this into the record, and this is the one to the Bank of LaFayette for the three million dollars. Also, I bragged also a lot on Bank of LaFayette and also talking more about First Volunteer Bank, you know, they really did a lot of homework on us last year in making sure that they wanted to sign up for this, and many other banks were going the other direction. And, you know, Elijah Parker, many of y'all may know Elijah Parker that's up here at this branch location, he was advocating hard and heavy for Walker County and this administration, and he really went to bat for us, and I'm very appreciative to Elijah Parker. He's a young man, he's not been in banking that very long in his career, and he really stepped up and went to bat, his leadership at their corporate level, and was able to get me in front of those right people to be able to have that conversation. So Elijah did a great job. And talking about earning our credibility back, this year, both banks were willing to do the full amount. They said, "What do you need?" And I said, "You know, both of you banks stepped up for us last year, we're going to split this between the both of you again," because I've had other banks now that they're calling me now, and saying, "Hey, can we talk to you, you're going to do a 10 this year?" And it's, "Yes, thank you, but no thank you," because we're going to support those that supported Walker County. And when both of these banks stood in the gap for Walker County, we're not going to turn our backs on them for a little better rate, we're going to stay loyal to them because they were loyal to Walker County. So this second one here is Resolution 32-18 for three million dollars with First Volunteer Bank.
Resolution R-032-18 for a three million dollar tax anticipation note for First Volunteer Bank. Again, folks, if you will forbear for me, this verbiage is identical with the exception of, "The Bank of LaFayette has been replaced with First Volunteer Bank."
Thank you, sir. That ends our regular scheduled meeting. At this time, we open the floor to any public discussion or comments, so if you would like to address this team and address your community, if you'd come up to the podium and state your name, and we would love for you to address us or anything to do with county government, county government business. Yes, sir, come right on in. Please tell us your name, please.
Good afternoon, ladies and gentlemen, and Commissioner Whitfield, I'm Ray C. Burnfin. I probably said that too fast. C is my middle initial. When I introduced myself over the telephone, they come back with Mr. Seber, Mr. Rayber. I'm Ray C. Burnfin, Irishman, first class, owner of Bluebird Hollow Farm, 3400 Bronco Road, LaFayette, Georgia. I've been a resident of this county since June of 1992. The Bank of LaFayette brought us here to this county, sold us our property. We're proud citizens of this county, we love this county. My wife makes comments all the time. Initially, when we first moved here, he thinks he's died and gone to heaven. I love my county, my country. I'm a patriot. I wear the flag of this nation on my sleeve. I served. Not so very proudly, I'm going to have to admit. I'm a Vietnam-era veteran, I did not serve in Vietnam, they sent me to Europe for a tour of seventeen months. And I could not see any call to duty or any pride in my service. But I have something tonight that I think is going to be of interest to you, I believe it will. This debt doesn't belong to Shannon Whitfield, it did not belong to Bebe High School, we hired, excuse me, we elected these officials to represent us. The burden that we placed on their shoulders belongs to us. And we must do what we need to do to bring unity to our county. We got to quit finger pointing, so-and-so brought us into this problem. We got to quit blaming, we got to unify. My name is on the line for the lease of the Walker County Civic Center on October the 13th, this is Saturday night. And we're going to have a grand old time up there singing the hymns of faith. From the Broadman Hymnal, the hymnal that preempted all the Baptist hymnals that was published in 1940. We're also involved in a couple of additional entities. We own a for-profit Bluebird Hollow Farm Incorporated in the state of Georgia, and also an entity called Golden Sound of Music, a not-for-profit entity in the state of Georgia. Now we're not a Bible 1C3, we very much desire to become one. But we're committed that we're going to raise monies, we're going to raise funds. This event will involve ticket sales, fourteen, fifteen dollars an entrance fee to come to this program and enjoy a wonderful evening of worship and praise. Old time, I'm talking about old-fashioned stuff. This is not contemporary music, this is not praise and worship music, we are not going to sing the same line fifteen times. It's going to make sense, we're going to bring out the meat and gospel, meat and potatoes of the gospel messaging song. So, the wonderful news about this is that every penny that we raise through ticket sales is going to be committed to debt reduction of the Walker County budget. And we call on Mr. Whitfield to establish a method of accountability, we're going to, this is the Bank of LaFayette, so his helping us with this, they're committed to sell tickets for us and to work in, this coming week, WDYN Gospel Radio is going to air some announcements about this, and for the next six weeks, we have six weeks to plan. We've got a lot to do, but we're going to do it and have a great grand time. And so that is what I wanted to bring forth tonight, we hope that we'll get the support of every citizen of this county. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Burnfin.
Okay, who would like to come up next?
I have a few for you this time. Request for the status of the empty building vacated by primary healthcare, and if we have anyone that we're looking at putting in it, and to add to that, is there a timeframe or a time limit where if we don't replace another low-cost provider, will we lose the grant that we got for that building?
What Chelsea's asking about, for those of you that may not know, the facility up in Rawlsville that back in the earlier days was the Walker County Health Department, and was also part of, it was used by Family and Children's Services, which is off of McFarland Road directly in behind the NXT Nursing Home. For a little over ten years, Houss Primary Healthcare is one of their facilities. They recently moved out of that facility and vacated it. Back a few years ago, there was a federal grant through the USDA that was established to do some renovations to that building for interior and exterior, also the heating and air system, roof, and so forth, several hundred thousand dollar grant. And that grant was all requested, it was awarded based off of serving low to moderate income communities. And so, there's an amortization scheduled with that, that the county has to honor and utilize that facility for low and moderate income type activities or projects or things that help back the community. So I was actually up there today, meeting with some contractors and having some maintenance work and things done, and working to better secure the building because it's currently empty. And so, the state of Georgia through the, this Georgia Department of Community Affairs was the facilitator of that grant process, and so I had contact with them back, gosh, probably then six or eight months ago, making us aware of that previous commitment and engagement of the county. And so we are currently exploring several different options of what's the best use for that facility. The facility's in very, very good condition, it's a good-sized building, I think it's close to ten thousand square feet. I did have that building appraised last year, in round numbers, the appraisal on that building was about 1.1 million dollars. The building is paying for and free and clear of any liens as far as I know. But we want to utilize that building to adhere to the commitments that was made to the USDA, and so we want to make sure we're making the right decision, and we may be able to use the building for multiple entities that would serve our community well. So, I'm not aware of any time restriction we're under, I think that the state would be happy and proud that we're doing this the right way and exploring our options, but we are so securing the building, we're working on some exterior security lighting today and removal of some trees and working on the, just the overall general maintenance to keep the building in good condition and good health, we're not just neglecting the property. So, hopefully in the near future, we'll have some announcements back to y'all and hopefully a ribbon cutting of something that's going to be great for that community.
Awesome. And the four new transit buses that we got, when will they stop running?
Okay, what she's requiring about is the Walker County Transit System, which is a very, very vital part of our community, and there's a lot of people that use our transit system. That program is partially funded by your local county tax dollars, state dollars, and federal dollars. And so we recently took possession of six transit buses. These are brand-new buses, they, it was all a bid process and a build-out to spec through the state of Georgia because they managed the federal grant dollars. Those buses, round numbers, I think the invoice showed was just shy of forty-seven thousand dollars per bus. The good part is, we only pay ten percent of that. And so we only pay less than forty-seven hundred dollars per bus to get a brand-new bus. And those buses come, already got our phone number and our name and everything, they're ready to go, and I was shocked, they even had a full tank of gas in them. So, you just don't normally buy something and get a full tank of gas. But we had been waiting on those for several months, those were actually, that contract and order was actually put in about over a year ago. And so I went down with the team, there were seven of us that went down to Austell, Georgia, and picked those up, and there was a kind of a funny story, there was a ton of paperwork that you had to sign because they had all the registrations and warranties and titles and all this information. So, I went in and sat down and started signing the papers. I was dealing with folks from the Georgia Department of Transportation from the DOT, and another lady came in and she said, "I just found out that you were the commissioner."
Okay.
She said, "One of them outside told me you were the commissioner." And I said, "Yeah, that's correct." She said, "Well, I just called my boss and told her that we actually had a commissioner picking up the buses." And she said, "That's never happened before." And I said, "Well, I'm hands-on." And I said, "I wanted to come down and make sure this was done right, come down with the team to get these buses." And she said, "Well, my boss has asked me to take a picture of all of us out beside the bus because they want to use this in a presentation." I said, "Let's do it." So we took a group photo, and they also said, "You've got four more coming for next year." We have a total of ten buses in our fleet, there's normally eight or nine of those rolling on any given workday. The advantage to this program is, being partially funded by state and federal dollars, is they'll pay ninety percent of the bus cost, we pay ten percent, and then they'll pay fifty percent of the maintenance and transportation and fuel costs and the labor that it takes to run these on a fifty-fifty basis. So, when I first looked at this, they told us that they had six buses for us in production that was ordered up by the prior administration, I said, "Cancel the order, we don't have any money." And then once they explained to me I could buy them for ten cents on the dollar, I said, "Well, let's talk about this." And then they said, "Well, you can buy them ten cents on the dollar, but your maintenance is fifty cents on the dollar." And they said, "You have one transmission go bad, one engine go bad, you spent more than forty-seven hundred dollars and you could have got a new bus." I mean, a set of tires, a set, six tires for one of these buses, you know, is probably close to a thousand dollars. And so, these buses, they find, or, you know, they like to turn these about every two-hundred thousand miles. The buses that we will be turning back into the state, those six buses have probably in that range, maybe a little over, and we will, we're working on the registration to get the tags for those, Becky was working on that today. And then we've got to get our radio system transferred out of the buses, we're turning back in over to the new ones. And so our fleet maintenance department will be working on that hopefully next week to get those radios changed over. And once we get the tags on them and the radios on them, those will start rolling, and they're already numbered and assigned, and all that was done prior. And then again, they hope to be a little faster this year for the 2019, and hopefully by May or June of 2019, we'll have the additional four buses. So, from a maintenance cost, it's good to run new, and also, a lot of our senior adults ride these buses, so we don't want to be out breaking down, having air conditioning problems, and so it's good to know that our citizens are riding in new buses, and we paid ten cents on the dollar.
And there is a request to see if the county would be interested in asking or working with the state to widen 151 and 136 to five lanes.
The, those, both of those roads are state roads. Any road that you see in your community that is a number road, that means that's a state road. And so, we can advocate to the state and take a position if we see from a traffic area or something, but it's But as far as us using your local county tax dollars to do any state road projects, doesn't make sense. They got a lot more money than we do. And so they would probably, any request they would get even from a citizen, they would, you know, probably do a traffic study and do an assessment and determine that if it warranted the expansion of those roads to a five lane or not. So that's something we can mention. But normally, the state of Georgia's working usually on about a five-year plan cycle. So even if they come up and say, "Oh, that's great, let's do it," you're looking at five years.
Is there a possibility of sidewalks on Happy Valley Road?
Sidewalks, we've had some requests around the community, different roads for sidewalks. Our T-Splash money that we started collecting in April, one of the provisions for that is sidewalks. The position that we're really in right now, we've got so many of our county roads that are in such bad, bad shape that we're trying to focus, as committed, all of our T-Splash dollars for our road and bridge infrastructure. Because there's five bridges that our school buses are not even allowed to cross because they're not safe. And so I know sidewalks are very important, but I think we've got to look at what's the greater good for our community and the conditions of our roads. And we had people questioning when we were talking about T-Splash because another thing that you can do is you can build any type of movement of transportation so you can do bicycle paths and walking trails and all kinds of things. And there was some concern that the county would get back into developing and buying land to make trails through the mountain. And we've got several hundred miles of great trails and feel like we're in good shape there. So, you know, I made the commitment to the citizens that if they would pass the T-Splash, that we would use those funds to focus on that core transportation infrastructure, being our roads and our bridges. And so, again, sidewalks are important, but we just don't have the extra funding at this time to address those.
Last one. What is your advice to someone with a wild animal problem rather than sending them to animal control that would be used for domestic?
Yeah, pretty much our animal control usually will focus on domestic type animals. The state really wants us to turn any issues with wild animals over to the state wildlife management. Now, we do sometimes get involved if someone calls and thinks that there is an animal acting very strange that possibly has rabies. We will immediately respond to all rabies suspicious calls, regardless of the type of animal that it may be. Because usually if a, if an animal's acting rabid and it's, you know, you say you've got a fox is an example, that's out in the middle of the day, out in the middle of the road staggering around that appears to be infected by rabies. We want to address that as a team effort with the state. But if someone calls and they're complaining about deer or raccoons or other type wild animals, the state really wants us to not address those issues and let the, let the state wildlife game management manage those issues.
Thank you.
Thank you, Chelsea. Do a good job. Okay, anybody else have anything they'd like to address tonight? Anything about county government? Yes, sir.
How we coming on our plan is about the roads.
Okay, the question is, we are doing a full assessment on every road in Walker County. Also, all of our bridges and all of our culverts that cross under all these roads. So very coincidental, we had a meeting with them today and got an update and actually went out and looked at one road in intersection that we want to do some improvements on in the future by obtaining some additional grant funding, hopefully. And so they showed us a map assessment that was at 87% complete. So they felt like that they would have us reports and information back about October. And so we are working with them. They have already worked with us and filed for one federal grant that hopefully we'll hear something on this year. And then we, they made us aware of another Georgia state grant today that we're going to apply for that has a January submission deadline that we, we give them the green light on today. So this, the real value, as we stated before, of doing this assessment, we are using the state of Georgia Department of Transportation grading system and using an engineering service that comes out and does an evaluation and assessment of every county road and grades that, puts that in electronic database and does a number grade of that. And so information is very important and powerful in obtaining grants and also gives us a good assessment that we can take that database and load it into our GIS system, be able to put it on a map and see where our stress and our problems are and focus primarily on our main thoroughfares that we have. Where in the past, it's real easy for local government to pave roads based off of who lives on that street and the political pressure of those type things. And so we didn't want to fall into that bad habit. And so with all of the, I think around 700 miles of road, I don't have the knowledge, the ability or the time to go through and make a, an assessment from an engineering structural standpoint to know which roads that we need to work on first and structural issues and things and also the different type of applications that can be done. It's not always the road has to be completely repaid. And so we felt like that working with this particular firm that really specializes in this area is a good investment. The original assessment cost to do this work that they've been working on for several weeks was around 80 to 90,000 dollars, it's less than 100,000 dollars. A lot of times they'll just say it's about 100,000 dollars and we're using our T-Splash dollars to do that. But with that, getting that data and for them to be able to help us to get grants, if they can get us over a five-year process of this, if they can get us a grant to pave one mile of county road, anywhere in the county over the next five years, they can get us money for one mile, they will have paid for that assessment. So what we're trying to do, right now, we have, basically for round numbers, we have spent 100,000 dollars to get this assessment done, to get this data. What they're working hard to prove their worth is to turn that expenditure into an investment. And we want to return on that investment of that 100,000 dollars by having that data to be ready. So hopefully President Trump, as he continues to push funding down for infrastructure improvement, we've done our homework. They'll say shovel ready, engineering work's done, assessments have done. We'll be there with our handout, ready to take those funds. And so we have already applied for one federal fund opportunity that it come out. A lot of times those come out and you'll have two to four weeks to submit all your data and all the information. It's a real short window of time when those things will hit and they're very competitive because you're competing against all 50 states and because it's federal dollars. And so we want to be prepared and be ready. And so we feel like the, the opportunity and our odds are extremely in our favor that they will generate enough, because basically to resurface a mile of roads, 100,000 dollars. And so one mile, and we've got 100% return on our investment. I think those are pretty good odds.
If we let, of course, I mean, a lot of the jobs are up there. It's gonna be long, we might have to make out more than one lane. It just, just like this right here, right there, mailbox is whole. That's bigger than that, that's it.
Yeah, I've got a text message today. We had some electrical issues on our patch truck. So we only got out this morning, it's probably about 10:30, 11 o'clock, and he patched 79 potholes today. So if we keep our truck running, he feels like he can, he can patch about 125 potholes a day. And that'll get us in a lot better shape if we can get that truck running. We have had some, some bumps in the road, so to speak, we get in the truck running. Anything else? Yes, sir. Yes, come on up, please.
Mr. Michael, I think I've been in conversation with you.
Yes, sir.
Facebook. I just want to say first off, I got a lot of respect for you.
Please.
And I think you're doing a great job there for the county. I'm so proud of how it's going. My question though was that, about the animal shelter that I asked you. And I'm really asking this from my father. He was wanting that dog a little bad and he just felt like it was picked over. And I'm just curious, I feel like I owe him an answer as to why the Humane Society gets first pick over dogs and the Walker County citizens are left to get what's slept over.
Uh, what, what Mr. Michaels is talking about here was some, ended up being some social media dialogue over the weekend that we had.
I apologize, yeah, but you won the spot. I didn't, I didn't intend for you to do that.
It's okay, I work seven days a week, so it's all right. But the, the root of the question is here, is about our animal shelter. And I appreciate you being here tonight because I think it's a good opportunity to share with all of y'all some, some history about where we are, where we've, where we've come from and where we're headed with our animal shelter. This, because it's been a big initiative for me because the, the numbers were very disturbing to me when I took office. But looking back at the data that we have, in 2015, there was over 1,500 animals that were euthanized at our animal shelter. In 2016, there was over 1,000 dogs and cats that were euthanized at the animal shelter. And when I found this out in early 2017, I said, "That's gotta stop. It's absolutely gotta stop." Well, we had a lot of hot potatoes, so to speak, we were trying to keep in the air and I kept sending the directive out to the team. "We gotta cut this out, this has gotta stop, it's gotta stop." Well, just with everything going on and change is not always easy, it took us until about October before we started getting a handle on this. And it took some leadership changes, it took some staff changes, and it took some, some, some changes in procedures and policies. We also had a consulting company come in and work with us free of charge to help us save more of our animals in Walker County. Because when you take in about 2,700 animals and you euthanize 1,000, 1,500 of them, there's not that many of them sick. And so it was important enough to me that we give all of these animals the opportunity of life and to be able to have a good home for these animals. The challenge that we have is we have, with that number, we have over 200 animals coming in on any given month. And they don't call for an appointment when they're coming. So sometimes you may get eight or 10 that come in within a two-hour window. The animal shelter was just built a few years back and it was built to house 48 dogs. Well, as of Monday, we had 91. And so we have a overcrowding, overpopulation, and we've got dogs that are double and triple pin. You know, these animals are the victims of our society, of people that drop them off, throw them out, surrender them. And it's very sad that some of the time that I've spent there and just listened to some of the people that bring these animals in because they ask them, "Why are you surrendering this animal?" And you have someone say, "Well, we're going on vacation." And we don't want to have to pay to have the animal kennelled somewhere and we don't have anybody to keep it, so we're just gonna surrender it. And then we are taking the animal in into an environment that's hostile. Because anytime you have a shelter, you never know what next animal's gonna bring the parbo in or some other disease or illness or whatever. And so when an animal comes into the shelter, the clock's ticking. Every day that that animal's there, the chance of survival is cut. And you can take and bring these animals in and process them and take and vaccinate them and do these things, and you're gonna come in on a periodic basis and you're gonna, you're gonna have some animals that just don't make it because sickness and illness and so forth. And so in the state of Georgia, or in the southern states as a whole, there's, there's not been a lot of legislation from the state level to have mandatory spade and neuter. Up in the northern states of our country, it's been in place for some time. And so what has happened, due to very strict spade and neuter laws, there has become a shortage of dogs, primarily some cats, in the northern states. So there's a lot of volunteers and nonprofit groups out there that are referred to as rescues, that are very compassionate about saving every dog or cat that they possibly can, regardless of the breed or regardless of the health of the condition a lot of times of those animals. And so one of the policy changes that we made was that when, before we adopt an animal out, our best practice is, is that we have that dog spayed or neutered before we release that dog or cat over to be adopted. So if someone comes in and pays the register, or pays the application fee for the adoption, then we ask them to come back in two to three days and they will pick up the animal after we've had it spayed and neutered. Because we had a honor system in the past. In 2017, when I went down to the shelter, they had a stack that I couldn't get my hands around that was just from the prior year of affidavits that people signed that was gonna, they have to sign an affidavit to verify that they would have that animal spayed or neutered and they would come back and give proof that that had taken place. That was the stack of the ones that didn't come back and give us proof. Now, I'm sure in that stack, there was probably a large number that had it done anyway and they just didn't come back and they were very responsible. And so we never really know about those. We don't have the staffing levels to go around and police and check and find out if they did knock on the doors. We do know the ones a lot of times that don't because next year, they bring that dog back with the litter. And say, "Hey, I got this dog last year, I know I was supposed to have it fixed, but I forgot about it, didn't have time, but I can't handle nine dogs." So they bring us the mama dog and the whole litter. So where, I find some people will disagree with me. The way we have managed this is that the shelter is for the animals. The shelter is to, is the safe haven to try to get these animals in homes, to survive these animals. And so we don't have enough local people coming in, even looking. We just, we track the people that are looking for an animal that come in. It's only a few hundred a year. And so if we didn't work with these rescues, we would end up euthanizing over 2,000 animals a year. Because we only are adopting out three to 500 animals a year. And so what happens unfortunately is that trying to make as many survive, working with these rescues, they will come in or call us or see these on a private Facebook type post. And they'll say, "All right, I'll take those 10, I'll take that 20, or I'll take this 25, we'll be by tomorrow morning, next day, whatever." When they pick them up, they'll take complete responsibility for them. If they're sick, they need to be spayed or neutered, they need additional vet care, feeding them, they take 100% responsibility for those. But they will come in and get these animals in large quantity so we don't have to euthanize them. And we don't have the expense of the ongoing vet bills and food and shelter and everything that it takes, plus the staff's overwhelmed. I've been out there, folks, and it's not an easy job. And you take a concrete block building and you walk in and you've got 90 dogs all barking at the same time? And basically what I hear, when I hear 90 dogs barking, what I hear is, "Pick me, pick me, pick me." Because they're all jumping and chasing, they, they see somebody, "Take me, get me out of here." And so it's really a, a sad position. And I know it's very stressful for our staff because they're trying to make the right decisions to make sure these animals are saved. That's their passion. That's why they will work in these conditions. They work for low wages most of the time because they are compassionate about saving these animals. So what happens a lot of times is animals will get committed to a rescue that maybe someone locally wants to adopt. But we have to keep and maintain those relationships with those rescues because they're taking out the large quantity. And so we're in a position that we're having to give preferential treatment of reserving animals for these rescues so they will come in and get them in mass quantity and take them to other states. So I know people that say, "I'm a local taxpaying citizen and I want to come in and get that puppy or that special breed." And so when you look at it that way, that sounds like, "Well, hey, that makes sense. Well, we're local taxpaying, we're paying for this shelter, we're paying for this staff. We want to come get that, that one special one." And I, and I see that point. And I see that point. But what about the ninety you just left? That's the question. You come get the one or the two, you just left ninety. Now, we've got to deal with the other ninety. And so, if you take the special breed or the unique breed or the cute one and a shelter already had that one pre-sold, and they show up and they go, "What happened to number twenty-eight?" "Oh, well, we had someone locally and we give local preference." They're liable not to be back. Because now, they've got to go to a customer and say, "Hey, I didn't get that one." And so, they look at, they waste their time. Some people will say, "Well, this sounds awful fishy, let's follow the money. What are these rescues making off of these?" Well, folks, if they were not making some money and covering their costs, they would not show up. So yes, they're, you know, they're in a nonprofit, but they've got to cover their gas, their transportation, their vehicle costs. A lot of times, they're running around in large vans and things that are getting eight to ten miles to the gallon and they're running to Minnesota. You know, they, you know, up there back, they may have a two-hundred-and-fifty-dollar fuel bill. And so, they have expense and overhead. And so, yes, when you get further north, you see adoption rates of what we adopt a dog for forty or fifty, sixty dollars, they're getting a hundred, two-hundred, three-hundred, four-hundred dollars possibly. But they've got transportation, they've got vet, they've got care, food, everything that they've got to do to make that happen. And if there's not something in it for them, then they're not gonna fool with us because they can't survive. There are a lot of these people that are, that work with organizations that are just, they're just transporters. And they say, "Hey, I'm off every Sunday, I'll drive the van." And they'll make a junket, and they'll drive four or five hours. And they'll drop the van to somebody and they'll drive another vehicle back. Or they bring the van back if they offload. Because they want to do their part. And they don't get into all of the organization and all the documentation and everything. A lot of these states are very strict about the documentation as well of bringing animals over the state line. So they have to follow a lot of guidelines and things. But folks, if you really want to follow the money, the real big money is the quarter of a million dollars a year we spend to operate the shelter. That's the money you need to follow. It's very, very expensive. And we get a lot of donations. And a lot of these rescues will bring food. And if you look back on the county Facebook page, we've got pictures that we've recorded and give praise and thank yous to some of these rescues. Well, they'll bring, they'll bring a couple of bags, they'll bring a whole pallet, a wrapped pallet of food and say, "Here it is." Because they want that relationship with us, we want that relationship with them. And I'm sure many times, they're getting that food donated from the manufacturers as well. Or they have a discounted, very low cost or whatever. And so, in order for the greater good of the animals to be able to get mass numbers moved out, we are having to give preferential treatment to these rescues. And I know some people are gonna disagree with us having to take that position. With that also, one of our problems is, is every bit of this of processing over twenty-seven hundred animals a year is all done on a yellow pad. And so, what happened in your circumstance is a staff member wrote it down on the yellow pad, manager's dealing with somebody that was not a consistent database. And so, left hand didn't know what the right hand was doing. So it's a procedural, it's a process problem internally. And so, I spent about four hours Sunday online reviewing and studying and looking at animal share, animal care shelter software. We did a three-and-a-half-hour WebEx with a company yesterday that's probably gonna be the vendor that we're gonna go with that will give us a very robust database that will run on a smartphone or a tablet. It's a web application that we can start immediately that we then will load all of our intake and evaluate all these animals. And then, it also has a seamless link into Pet Finder, which is an online software people use to get pets, that will streamline this process and keep us from repeating what happened to your family, which I'm understanding has happened to other families as well. And so, the shelter's never had an operating or software system, it's always done on a yellow pad. And it's not right in today's technology to be working from a pad and paper when you're running an operation trying to save twenty-five hundred to three thousand animals a year. So I know that's a long answer.
That's a good answer.
And I know that, again, my apologies to your family that they did not get the dog they were looking for. But it's tough decisions that we have to make. On a positive note, with the changes that we've already made, through the end of July, we've only had to euthanize thirty-five animals. So they went from doing hundreds, sometimes a month, to we're down to thirty-five for the year. Because one of the processes that we put in place is three staff members have to sign off on that euthanasia. So that animal has to be to the point of illness, of possible non-recovery or just too much pain and suffering, or to the point that that animal is so aggressive that it does not need to be put back out into the community because it could kill someone. And so, human life comes first. And so, we have that three-step process. And so, they take that very serious because they want to save everyone. And so, when you're, when you're a shelter staff team member and you're working with an animal or a dog and you're trying to save it, you're trying to nurse it back to health and you've taken it to the vet, you have to form some attachment. I just, I don't think there's any humanly possible way that you don't form some of attachment. And then, you're one of the ones that's got to decide, you sign the dotted line, to say enough's enough. And then, once you sign the dotted line, you've got to carry out the process. And so, those are tough conditions, folks, because all that's done in-house. And so, they are very serious, we've got a great team, we're looking for more volunteers. If anybody wants to get involved and make a positive difference in your community and animal shelter somewhere you can have an immediate impact. You know, our goal in the assessment we did with the, with the company, their organization was called Target Zero. And we made a decision as an administration and as a team that our target is zero euthanasia. But we know, and they tell us, that's not a hundred percent possible because you've got some that you just can't save. But that's our goal. And that's a total mind shift. And so, you know, my goal is, is I hope we have less than fifty for the year. And so, when you're going from fifteen hundred or a thousand on a calendar year down to fifty or less, that's great teamwork and that's a directional change for this county.
I like the good old record that following money wasn't my comment.
Yeah, I know, there was a lot of comments on there.
But my wife would probably say that I love animals more than I love people. I'm a big animal lover, I've got a farm, I've got goats, I've got cats. And I'm a supporter of the shelter, I adopted a cat here recently. My wife and I would constantly drop off food. Not sure I'm welcome there now, but...
Oh, no, absolutely, no. And that's the thing, I mean, I think there's probably one item there that we may have a disagreement on the process of giving preference to the rescues. But let's don't let that one thing stand in the way of a positive working relationship and you being involved with the shelter. So you're welcome at the shelter anytime.
But I think they do a great job, honestly, I support them. I appreciate what they do. So I didn't mean to knock them, I want to say that too. It was just my question and you answered it, thank you for doing that.
So hopefully, by the first of the month, we'll have some new shelter software and we'll be better organized and try to keep that from repeating.
Great.
Thank you.
Appreciate it.
But that's, thank you. That's the commitment I made online, that we were gonna resolve this problem from reoccurring. And so, we immediately took action and again, worked with the department manager and supervisor yesterday. And we spent three and a half hours looking at the software. Had some email correspondences today negotiating on all of the details of that. So hopefully, by the first of the month, we'll have that in place and that's really gonna help the staff. Okay, what else?
I have a question.
Yes, ma'am, please come up, please come forward.
Do I have to?
Really need to.
I've got a bad hip.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't realize you had a cane, I'm sorry, go ahead.
What, my mother, where she lives, she's, her property's very nice. But her neighbors that's just moved in, their place is horrible. I mean, she's even getting out there trying to mow their yard. There's about five or six people live there, none of them are mowing. It's really ridiculous whenever a seventy-five-year-old woman is taking care of her property and trying to go take care of the neighbors.
Is it in the county or one of the cities?
It's in the county. And I just wondered, where do you go? I mean, I don't want to if it's maybe some people having a hard time. But we don't know nothing about these people. I mean, and I just don't understand because they look pretty much young enough and definitely in better shape than the mom.
Sometimes we find people just need encouragement.
The place is really looking bad.
To let them know, yeah, sometimes they need encouragement to know that we've got ordinances and codes in place that they're not supposed to let their properties get that way. Sometimes people need strong encouragement.
Yeah, I mean, I get worried, especially right now because it's so dry. And we have a fire, you know, I mean, you just, oh, that's kind of scary.
And sometimes, some people get to the point where they need a judge to help encourage them. And then, some people just have maybe physical disabilities or issues where they just don't have the physical ability. And I'm not saying it's in this case, just talking real generally.
I don't know, my mother, after she told me that they moved from somewhere else because of rent, trouble with the neighbors, I said, "Well, then, your mother, your breasts is tall as mine."
So we find those situations where they need assistance due to extending circumstances. Then, we've worked with some faith-based groups and also Covenant College worked with us on five projects this week. And those are also on our Facebook page where as part of their student orientation, they brought down three hundred college freshmen, freshmen to work on five properties to help us clean up our county.
Well, how did you find out?
Tonight's your lucky night. The man sitting in the corner with the hat's David Brown. He's over our codes department. You need to give him that information before you leave tonight and he'll take it from there.
Yeah, if I'm at the door or something, I'm gonna go.
Just get him the address or where your family lives, get him as much information as possible and your phone number so he can follow up. And they'll investigate and see at what level involvement they need. If it's a little encouragement, a lot of encouragement, or encouragement from a judge or help from a nonprofit, and they'll see that through.
It's getting bad, the little dogs can't even, you can't see them get into their house, I mean, it's...
Those are things that his department handles and he'll take care of that.
Thank you.
All right, anything else? Yes, sir.
You mentioned earlier in the meeting that you can go online and watch this.
Yes.
Where is that?
Yes, you can simply Google just Walker County, Georgia. Or the actual address is walkercounty spelled out completely, ga.gov. And you'll see a tab at the top that says government and it shows public meetings. And you can go to there and it will link you to our YouTube channel where you can go back and watch every video of every meeting that we've had back twenty months. Also, the agenda packs are there that you can reference to off the website. So all of those links are there. Also, all of the financial audits, you used to have to do an open records request to get a financial audit because I had to do that before. Now, all of the financial audits are online all the way back to nineteen ninety-six. And the current budget, all hundred pages is online of the current fiscal year budget. So Joe's done a fantastic job of getting our new website up and going and getting all that data online. So smartphones, tablets, and resize and everything's in downloadable PDFs, real easy to access, really fast website. All right, man, this is good meeting, I like these, these are good.
Well, I have to say, the animal shelter is a wonderful place. I work as a substitute for Walker County. And, you know, some of the house good kids, we used to go over there. And that was a good thing because I noticed the children would have fundraisers for the animals. And at Christmas, they would, you know, take and give money over there. But I've never ran into anybody bad over there. I mean, and you're right about the place having so many animals.
It's full, it stays full. You know, sometimes we have to turn some away or ask people to delay because we just, we just get overwhelmed. So try to turn them as quick as we can.
We need a law in Georgia that people need to euthanize their animal. I mean, I mean, not euthanize, but spay.
Spay and neuter.
And neuter, yeah. I mean, considering a lot of animals at different times of the year, going to these places.
It's a big issue in the South and we've got our fair share. Okay, anybody else? Well, great, appreciate you coming, hope you come back. We do this the second and third Thursday of every month, for the most part.
Second and fourth.
Second and fourth Thursday, thank you. Second and fourth Thursday of every month, the agendas are always online twenty-four hours in advance, thank you.